Whereham and welcome to the December twelfth, twenty twenty-three Select Board Meeting. May I have a roll call, please, Mr.?
Tonight, we have attendance, Mr. Slaven, Ms. Whiteside, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Bowen, and myself, Jared Chadwick. Captain tonight is Mr. Bessie.
Pledge of allegiance. Um, I don't like that beard. Let's do it, Mr. Sullivan. Pledge of allegiance.
Needs that Grecian formula still.
Remember, I have to unmute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you. Okay. Residents' comments. Comments on non-agenda items should be limited to two minutes, and there will be no more than ten minutes of resident comments per meeting based on past practice. The Select Board will not respond or comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Please raise your hand.
You have Susan and Deneen Rose was in there.
No, Deneen's an appointment.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, Susan.
Just disappeared.
No, she's there. Can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Hi, yes, my name is Susan Noonan, and I live in Onset.
Hi, Susan.
Hello. I'm well, thank you. How about you folks?
Good, thank you. Do you choose to address us?
Yes, I do choose to address the Select Board. Do I have permission to address the Select Board at this time?
Yes, but on, not on any agenda item.
Okay, yes, I'm not speaking on any agenda item, and I do understand that my comments will be under two minutes. And I do understand this, as in the past, the Select Board will not comment on my comments this evening. So do I have your permission to begin?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you so much. It's going to be very short. I was here at this meeting on October tenth of twenty twenty-three, and I raised the concerns about the, uh, folks who are staying in the motels in town, specifically if there was any plan to put a letter together to address the Commonwealth. I haven't seen any update on that letter. I've spent the last hour or so on the website looking through that, and I just appreciate if the Select Board could publish the letter that was sent to the Commonwealth, and if the letter has not been sent to the Commonwealth, the reasons why that hasn't happened yet. Thank you so much for your attention this evening. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Noonan. Enjoy, enjoy your evening. Is there anyone else who chooses to address the board?
I'm sorry, just a quick response for Susan.
No, Alan, no.
All right.
Thank you.
Put something out there about it. It's already been decided.
Um, anyone else who chooses to address the board on a non? Okay. Um, would Deneen Rose, Kwame Barti, Lieutenant Snyder, Samantha Nichols, raise your hands, please?
Anyone have any announcements?
Um, I'm gonna get them in there at the same time. Announcements, Mr. Slaven?
Okay. Uh, I'll do one for Mrs. Slaven first. Uh, January ninth, second Tuesday in January, is the deadline to submit Community Preservation Act grants for consideration at the Springtown Meeting. Applications are available on the Community Preservation Committee webpage. Uh, questions, et cetera, email cpc@wareham.mass.us. Uh, we had an incident.
I will note for the record that they are meeting tomorrow evening.
Okay, next, uh, I received an email, some of us have, about an accident on Route Six uh, by the Swiss Beach Road intersection. Uh, a person got severely injured. Someone basically, uh, didn't stop, uh, while someone was in the crosswalk and launched them down the road, I think. Uh, just so people understand, we've been working on this for quite a while on the town side and on the state side. Uh, Route Six, as we all know, is a state road. It's not a town road. Uh, we don't have any real authority per se, but we've been working on this. There's a new bridge going in by the Willianic River, which will be at the Marion Wareham Line. Uh, from that point down to, uh, basically almost Viking Drive, they'll be redoing the road as well. And part of that project is the actual Swiss Beach Road intersection with a traffic light. Uh, for some reason, uh, nobody can give me an answer. Uh, the state decided to do another traffic study, which delays the projects, which will be in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which means it starts basically July first, twenty twenty-four, and that ends in basically June of twenty twenty-five. So we are working on it. I believe the police department has put a couple of their illuminated signs up temporarily. But we're trying to put a meeting together, uh, with the next week or two with Mass DOT to see what they'll allow us to do, or what they will do to help us out with this. So again, you know, we've not had the issue. We've been doing the best we can, and we've actually gone way past what we know we can do. Uh, the other issue we have is the, uh, uh, let's see. We've got some budget meetings, et cetera. Get over that later on. The MBTA stuff, there's a lot of things going on right now pushing at the end of the year, but, uh, nothing is gonna have a drastic effect for Wareham. The one project that will be quite interesting to see if we're able to make this work. I've had meetings with John Salerno, uh, Mary Ellen DeFrias from, uh, Gatra, and we'll be meeting in probably a couple of weeks. Uh, John asked if there was a way to get night service into Onset, especially on weekends, have people go to the restaurants, et cetera. Uh, we started the conversation, and, uh, we'll have another serious discussion probably in a week or two, as I said, to see if we can put this all together, where we can have basically a bus service that goes through the area of Onset, then goes back around and go over to Bay Point, et cetera, take people from that area downtown Onset and back again during uh, nighttime and also on weekends. That's it for me for today.
Thanks, Mr. Slaven, Mr. Chadwick.
Uh, I only have one. Um, I might need some help with this one, too. Uh, last Thursday, uh, a couple of members, three members from the Wareham Select Board attended the joint committee meeting of the school, uh, school committee and, um, FinCom to discuss the school's budget. Um, the school's budget accounts for, correct me if I'm wrong, a little bit over seventy percent of the town's overall budget. Um, and I have to say, uh, I'm a little disappointed. There was only three people, uh, that attended via Zoom. Um, and yet I see people complaining on Facebook and every other social media about budget, 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 but yet nobody shows up to this. And it was well advertised, so in harsh words for everyone complaining, don't complain if you're not gonna show up. That's my only announcement.
Thank you. I have a couple. Just want to remind people that the, um, annual Night of Homelessness Recognition is on the twenty-first, which is the shortest day of the year. That will be at, held over at the Turning Point location. I think it's at five o'clock, but I'm not quite sure of that. And then, um, we have been notified by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that the individuals living in the Atlantic Motel will be removed to a different location on the twentieth of this month. They haven't told us where they will be going, but they will be removing them from the Atlantic Motel. The Atlantic Motel will no longer be a site for immigrants or other homeless people.
Hey, Judy, they're actually moving them out of Wareham also. They're not staying in Wareham.
Yeah, they're moving them out of, yeah, correct. Okay, I'm gonna go to, um, to the Affordable Housing Trust. We have Samantha Nichols with us this evening. Um, Ms. Nichols, would you choose to address the board, please, about your appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust?
Still muted.
My apologies. Still getting used to this. Um, I'm sorry, what, uh, what information would you like for me to provide?
I'd like you to identify yourself for the record and then why you would like to be on this committee.
Uh, Samantha Nichols, um, I'm actually currently on the Historic District Commission Committee here in Wareham. Uh, I was also on Historic Commission in Plymouth for twelve years, almost twelve years as Secretary. I was on the Affordable Housing Trust Committee in Plymouth for approximately six years. Um, I also sit on the Cultural Council. I like to be involved in the town that I am um, associated with, and so I'm trying to become more involved with the Wareham area since I've lived here for quite some time. And it just made sense to make a transition from some of the Plymouth Committees to Wareham Committees.
So, Ms. Nichols, you are a resident of the town of Wareham?
I am. I can actually see the town hall from my house.
Any of you, um, have any questions, Ms. Nichols? I do. Go ahead, Mr. Chadwick.
I have none.
Mr. Slaven?
I just want to thank you for applying. My wife already told me I have to say yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to, um, address an issue that you have had on other committees that you've served on in Wareham, and that is your attendance issue. Can you speak to that?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. We actually, as a board, had a discussion about this. There wasn't a set day during the week or during the month where there was a mid, a meeting scheduled. It was a little bit willy-nilly, so to speak. Um, and where I am a real estate agent, have been for thirty years now, I do have a lot of appointments nights and weekends. So we actually did have a discussion finally where we did set a time where we will be meeting the first Tuesday of the month, unless there are extenuating circumstances, and then at that point, there will be adequate notice being given so that people can make arrangements for it.
And what committee is that, Ms. Nichols, please?
And that was the Historic District Commission.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that clarification. I'll accept a motion.
All right. Not muted. Okay, good. I move to appoint Samantha Nichols to Wareham Affordable Housing Trust with a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Motion made and seconded to appoint. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Myself, it is unanimous. Ms. Nichols, you'll have to, um, go to the Select Board Office and pick up the appropriate forms, and I'm sure you've done them before, but they need to be done on an annual basis. You may not vote on that committee until you have been sworn in. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you so much. Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, Mr. Barti, would you choose to address the board on your, uh, request to be on the Alternative Energy Committee as a full member, please? Identify yourself for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Kwame Barti, uh, current resident of Wareham. Um, I actually am on the board of the, um, Conservation Commission, and I was approached to, um, take on, uh, another soft, um, volunteer, uh, on the Alternative, uh, Energy Committee, um, which I'm looking forward to, um, learning and actually discussing with members and how to set some kind of, uh, rules, regulations, bylaws, um, um, and learning steps for the, um, town of Wareham residents on, um, the situations with large, uh, solar array, um, and battery storage, um, how that is gonna impact our environment. Um, so I look forward to all these steps, um, and, uh, looking forward to, um, working with all the other members on the commission as well.
Thank you. You did, um, actually attend a meeting today, is that correct?
Uh, virtually, I did. Yes, well.
Excellent. Any questions of Mr. Barti?
Nope, gave no choice.
Okay, I'll accept a motion then.
I move to appoint Kwame Barti, uh, to the Alternative Energy Committee with a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second, and thank you.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Uh, Mr. Barti, again, you'll have to go to the Select Board Office and pick up the appropriate documentation to be sworn into this committee before you can vote.
Thank you, Judith. Have a safe holiday, and I'll see you guys soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and we have with us this evening Richard Snyder for an associate term for the Alternative Energy Committee. Would you identify yourself for the record, sir, and tell us about your interest on being on this committee?
Yeah, hello, I'm, uh, yeah, actually Captain Snyder from the Onset Fire Department, uh, and, uh, I just look at, I want to be able to, uh, help the committee, uh, on the code requirements that uh, put forth, uh, to the fire department, as well as my knowledge of the, you know, the building codes, uh, that are involved in, uh, various aspects of alternative energy. Um, hoping that I can be a help in that aspect, uh, as an associate member of this committee.
Awesome, and I believe you also attended the meeting today?
I did.
Excellent. Any questions of Mr. Snyder? Mr. Chadwick?
Just a, uh, comment. I, I want to thank you, Captain, very much. Um, when this committee was created, I was very uh, vocal, for lack of better terms, to make sure that they had a firefighter and, from each department to be on it. Um, as a firefighter myself for two local departments, solar panels scare me. They're, they're not something to be taken lightly in, in a, in a fire, so.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Excellent. Mr. Slaven?
Nope, everything is great.
Okay, Mr. Chadwick, I'll accept a motion, please.
I move to appoint, uh, Captain Richard Snyder to the Associate Term to Expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four for the Alternative Energy Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Smith was unable to make this evening's meeting, so he will be on next week's agenda. Uh, may I have a motion on the certified Waymasters? This is a formality. It is the state law that we must, um, appoint them, but the Waymaster list of appointees comes to us from, um, Walaka movers, and so on an annual basis, we appoint these individuals as Waymasters for the town. May I have a motion, please, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes, I move to appoint to the certified Waymasters with a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, uh, the people listed in the agenda.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? There will be two more members next week on our agenda as well. There's no further discussion. I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. S- Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
And myself, yes, they will be appointed. And then next, we have, um, Deneen Rose for a term on the Wareham Cultural Council. How are you this evening, Deneen?
Good, and you all?
Identify yourself for the record and speak to your interest on this committee.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. Identify yourself for the record and speak to your interest in serving on the Cultural Council, please.
Hi, my name is Deneen Rose. I'm a Wareham resident, been for fifty-seven years, um, very active in the community. Um, and I'm looking to get more active with the town. Um, I do a lot of things. I'm the president of the Onset Cape Verdean Festival. I am, um, a member of the Oak Grove Cultural, um, Center. Um, and I'd also like to join with, uh, the Cultural Center as well.
Excellent. Any questions or comments of Ms. Rose? I think, go ahead.
I want to thank her for stepping up. Uh, I, we've done work back and forth together over the years, and it's good to see, uh, Deneen continue on that track. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think it's a great connection, uh, Ms. Rose, in terms of your connection with the, oh, Onset Bay, Onset Grove Association. I just think that's a really good, um, match for, for the town and for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll accept a motion.
I move to appoint the Wareham Cultural Council, Deneen Rose, as a member with a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes, again, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Ms. Rose, um, the paperwork that is required, I think we sent you, um, you have to take the ethics, the, um, open meeting law, con- all of that stuff. We, I think we have already sent you the link to take those courses. When you've done that, you bring the certificates into the Select Board Office. They give you the sheet to go down to the clerk's office where you would be sworn in, and then you can vote it at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for helping with the parade. That was great.
Thank you, and I hope you all will be at the Council on Agent on Saturday for the dinner that I'm doing for the senior vets and those in need.
And what time is it, Ms. Rose?
That's one to three.
And that's on Saturday?
Correct.
At Dudley Brown?
The council.
Oh, at the Council on Agent?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You can count on me. I'll be there.
Very much.
Take care.
Holiday.
You as well. Thank you. Um, we now have some licenses and permits. Mr. Chadwick, I'll accept a motion on item seven A.
I move for the renewal of the following year-round retail package goods stores, uh, store all alcohol beverage license for the year twenty twenty-four under the provisions of Chapter one thirty of Mass General Law. Uh, hold on, as well as having the Director of Inspection Services certify that the business complied with the town bylaws concerning advertising posters on windows with the items listed in the agenda under seven A.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. The, um, issue of the signage in the windows is that under our bylaws, they are required to have no more than one-third of the window space covered with advertising, and therefore, um, before our license is issued, we will make sure through the building, the Director of Inspection Services, that that requirement has been met. Any further discussion on the motion? Yes, Mr. Chadwick?
Just to reiterate on that, uh, the reason for that, in case anyone was wondering, is safety reasons, so people are able to look in in case at any point in time they're being held up, if I'm not mistaken.
Just, uh, if I can add on to that, it's twenty-five percent on the window. It's an assigned bylaw, and the reason exactly is what was said is that the police and fire department, if a window is, that they have to get in because of either a fire or a robbery, they can't look inside. They aren't gonna go inside because it becomes a real safety hazard for them. It's not something that we just want to put in there to make life difficult. Is there's a hardcore reason for, thank you.
Thanks, and thank you for the clarification on the twenty-five percent. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven? Myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, I'll accept a motion on seven B.
I move for the renewal of the following year-round retail package goods stores wine malt beverage license for the year twenty twenty-four under the provisions of Chapter one thirty of Ma- Mass General Law of the items listed in the agenda, as well as having the Director of Inspection Services certify that the business complied with the town bylaws concerning advertising posters on windows.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. On item C, Mr. Chadwick, we have several uh, licenses, in fact, fifteen, um, being recommended. Would you make a motion, please?
Yes, uh, I move for the renewal of the following year-round common vic- vic- particular all alcohol beverage license the year twenty twenty-four under the provisions of Chapter one thirty of Mass General Law, as well as having the Director of Inspection Services certify that the business complied with the town bylaws concerning advertising posters on window, except for as listed in the agenda, except for two two, 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 six, seven, thirteen and fourteen, uh, which will be subject to building and fire inspection.
Excuse me, I think it should be six and eight, not seven, sir.
Yeah, you're right.
Is that your motion, sir?
So moved, yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, um, and the fire departments and the building inspector, um, sign-offs will be provided before the license is released. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, let's go to item seven D.
All right. I move for the renewal of the following year-round common vehicular wine and malt beverage license for the year twenty twenty-four under the provisions of Chapter one thirty of Mass General Law, as well as having the Director of Inspection Services certify that the businesses complied with the town bylaws concerning advertising posters on windows duh, 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 as listed in the agenda, except for one, uh, which will be subject to building and fire inspection sign-offs.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, may I have a motion on E, please?
Yes. I move for the renewal of the following year-round club all alcoholic beverage license the year twenty twenty-four under the provisions of Chapter one thirty-eight Mass General Laws. Uh, two, 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 for Kremesia Tribe, one fifty-six IORM DBA, Kremesia Tribe, one five six at seven four five Main Street in Wareham, uh, but will be, which will be subject to building and fire inspection sign-offs.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. They, I believe they already have the fire, Mr. Chadwick. I believe it's only.
Yes.
Okay. Is that your motion, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. And that's your second, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion to grant? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, please. Uh, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Just so that people who are looking think that we're not just blowing through these, um, this is the amount of paperwork that was required to get all of these licenses into the shape that they are in. Um, I think it's better than an inch and a half. Our office staff has been really busy, um, putting together all of the information needed. It has been reviewed by myself, Ms. Slaven, Mr. Chadwick, and I believe Mr. Bessie as well, as well as the office staff. So, Mr. Chadwick, now I'm waiting for a motion on item G. No.
F.
F.
And you are correct, it is an inch and a half I just measured. Um, I move for the renewal of the following year-round Veterans Club All Alcohol uh, Beverage License the year twenty twenty-four under the provisions of Chapter one thirty of Mass General Law to Dudley L. Brown Post two eight four six VFW of US Inc., DBA Dudley Brown Post two eight four six for Gibbs Ballpark Road in Onset, uh, which will be subject to the fire inspection sign-offs.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, subject to. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Myself, it is, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, item G.
Item G, I move for the renewal of following year-round inholder all alcohol beverage license the year twenty twenty-four under the provision of Chapter one thirty-eight Mass General Law uh, for the Glencoe Hotel LLC DBA, Glencoe Hotel, one sixty-seven Onset Ave in Onset, uh, subject to fire inspection sign-offs.
There's a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, subject to. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, how about H?
H, I move for the renewal of the year-round Farmer Series Pouring Permit for the year twenty twenty-four under the provisions of Chapter one thirty-eight Mass General Law to Lucky Goat Brewing LLC DBA, Lucky Goat Brewing at three seventy-nine Main Street, Wareham.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second, I think we also have to have the window on that one.
All right, uh, I will.
Would you make your motion that, to include that, Mr. Chadwick?
As well as having the Director of Inspection Services certify that the business complied with the town bylaws concerning advertising posters on windows.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Modified second, yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion made and seconded to approve, subject to. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick?
I move for the renewal of the year of the following year-round common vic- uh, vehicular license for the year twenty twenty-four under the provisions of Chapter one forty of Massachusetts General Law, uh, as well as having the Director of Inspection Service certify that the business complied with the town bylaws concerning advertising posters on the window to ninety-nine West LLC DBA as ninety-nine Restaurant Pub at forty Rosebrook Place in Wareham.
Uh, I don't, I don't believe.
Mr. Chadwick, I think, I think you want to do a, one of those, you have thirty-one licenses on this motion, I believe.
Oh, hey, sorry about that. I gotta turn the page there.
Yeah, turn the page, and then turn the page again.
Yeah, yep, you are right.
Go ahead, sir.
So I will continue. So I will continue with that motion. Uh, except three, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, seventeen, twenty, twenty-seven and twenty-nine, which are subject to building and fire inspection sign-offs.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll make a second, but some of these were as a common vic license. There should be no uh provision for uh the window piece.
Um, that's true. You wanna take that out of your motion, Mister Chadwick?
Yes, I removed that from my motion.
Is that a removal from the second, Mister Chad, Mister Slavin?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there any further discussion on those motions? So that they do have um several of them have either the building and or a fire department inspection. Is there any further clarification necessary?
As listed in the agenda.
Thank you. Any further um clarification necessary? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Mister Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mister Chadwick, how about number J?
Letter.
I letter J, well.
I move for the renewal of the following annual entertainment license for the year twenty twenty four, weekdays only under the provision of M G L. Chapter one forty, section one eighty-three A, as listed in the agenda.
Second.
Okay, and there are no exceptions on that, right? One, is that correct? Mister, yeah, okay. Motion made in seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Slavin?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mister Chadwick, K.
I'm, yep, I remove, uh, I move. I move for the renewal of the following annual entertainment license for the year twenty twenty four for Sundays only under the provision of M G L. That's general law, chapter one thirty-six, for uh, everything listed in the agenda under K.
Is there a second to that movie? Motion made in seconded to approve. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Mister Slavin? Mister Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mister Chadwick, L.
I I move for the renewal of the chapter class one license for the year twenty twenty four under the provisions of chapter one forty of the Master Law. For everything listed in section L, uh, except for one and four. Uh, subject to building and fire inspection sign-offs.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Mister Slavin, you're okay with those, right?
Yes, you can hear me?
Yeah, no, I'm just double checking.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Mister Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, it is so. Mister Chadwick, M.
I move for the renewal of the following class two license for the year twenty twenty four under the provisions of chapter one forty of the Master Law Laws as stated in the agenda, except five and ten, which is subject to building and fire inspection sign-offs.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll make a second, but item five is gonna require more than just a sign-off. Probably is gonna require a possible fire department plus, uh, I believe the gentleman just went for a signed application. Which is gonna have proved as well.
So Mister Chadwick's motion included the building and the fire.
Okay, good.
Yes, it did.
Okay. All set then, Mister Slavin?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Slavin?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, it is, yes, it is so. Mister Chadwick, N.
I move for the renewal of the following class three license for the year twenty twenty four under the provisions of chapter one forty of Mass Ma- Massachusetts General Laws. Uh, for Robert Auto Salvage Inc. D B As Roberts Robertson's uh Auto Salvage at twenty-six eighty Cranberry Highway in Wareham.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Mister Slavin?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. For the record, all of those class one, two and three licenses, on the license it has the location of the business. It has the number of cars that are allowed under the license. It has the number of parking places for employees, the number of handicapped parking places required. Um, so we are, as we are renewing this, um, these licenses, the office is including more information for the public. Um, because these licenses must be posted, available to the public at all times, just for the record. Okay, um, Mister Chadwick, let's go to eight.
All right. I'm sorry, say it again.
It's on page seven.
Yep. Uh, so I shouldn't pose a worry. All right, so this one, I move. Yes. I move to not object to, uh, we're sorry, I moved not to, Jesus. I move to not object to vote regarding the Cape Cod Coffee of twenty-four twenty-one Cranberry Highway. Uh, Wareham, application for a Keno license.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, motion made in seconded. This is a state license. We have twenty-one days to object to their application upon their notification to us. Hearing none, we will, the vote will be to not object. Is there, that was the motion in the second? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Mister Slavin?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Mister Chadwick, eight B.
I move to accept a eight hundred and ninety-four dollar donation from Advocates of Wareham Seniors Inc. to the Council on Agent.
Is there a second to that motion, motion made in seconded to accept a donation? Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Mister Slavin?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Mister Chadwick?
I move, I move to vote to approve the opt-out and reduction fees applications for curbside billing fiscal year twenty-four in the amount of five hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Slavin?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Mister Chadwick?
Eight D, uh, I move to approve the opt-out and reductions fee applications for curbside billing fiscal year twenty-four in the amount of three hundred and sixty-five dollars.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve this. Um, there are two on the agenda because there was a burp in the um forwarding of the requests to us and getting them on the agenda. Motion made in seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Mister Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mister Chadwick? E.
I move to allow the Board of Health to include a rental notice in the real estate tax bill.
Second.
Is there a second to the motion made in seconded? Um, the tax bills, in order to have an enclosure, the Board of Select, the Select Board must approve that enclosure. Is there, and we've done that in the past.
Yeah, and just a reminder, the stipulation is that it does not change the postage.
Would you add that to your motion, please, Mister Chadwick?
So moved.
Mister Slavin, thank you.
Just one second.
Yep, okay. Um, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Mister Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. That's so that it doesn't cost us any more money. Okay, I think we will, well, item F, eight F. Uh, we need to appoint a new select board member to the Wareham Affordable Trust. Um, I, we can put this off until the nineteenth when Mister Bessie will be available, but I don't believe that Mister Bessie who works full-time during the day would be able to do this as it's a daytime meeting, but it's up to you, gentlemen, if you'd like to postpone it for a week.
It's gonna be either you or I, but let's keep it a week so we can see where we can fit in.
Okay, well, okay, uh, thank you. Mister uh, Mister Chadwick may have a motion on G, please.
I move to authorize the sale of Surplus Town personal property.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Mister Ch- um, Solomon, do you care to speak to this as it's at your request?
Yeah, this is uh surplus is basically equipment for the town and the school and rather than just leaving it around, letting it rot, we uh, we auction it off at a open uh, open auction. I believe right now the estimate for everything is a guaranteed twenty thousand dollars for for all the items, so.
Thank you. And where would the money go, sir?
It goes to the general fund.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Mister Slavin?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Okay, um, under H, discussion of all liquor license types and how the hours are to be posted on the licenses. This is on the agenda because we've had several of our license holders question why we have the hours on the licenses. And we do that because that's what the A B C C requires, that is the law. One of the things that we know is happening, um, say, say a business applies to be open at from noon to eleven o'clock at night, okay? And there's a hurricane. Under the law, anyone who closes their business outside of the regular business hour closings is supposed to notify the town. That, of course, becomes problematic if you have a hurricane or a fire, you know, that kind of thing. What we're finding, however, is that some license holders are not actually sticking to the hours that they have requested. So I wanna put that out there. We are letting people know on the licenses that if it says midnight to, you know, or noon to midnight, that's when you're supposed to be open. Um, Mister Bowen, do you choose to weigh in on this one at all?
Well, um, Madam Chairman, the the concept that underlies the issuance of a li- a liquor license to anybody is that it's issued to serve the public need. And so the so, the public need is usually expressed by the certain set of hours that the place is supposed to be open. Uh, some of that is set by statute. Uh, for example, on um uh, certain types of licenses, you're allowed by right to be open between eleven in the morning and eleven in the evening. And then there are hours beyond that. Um, you know, till one or two o'clock, which can be done with the Board of Select's permission. Or between nine and eleven, which can be done by Selectman's permission. So anyway, there are certain hours that are set by statute. And if you're gonna have a liquor license, you you have it because it's presumed to be in the public interest and in the public need. And if you're open for fewer hours than allowed by statute or allowed by the Selectman, there's a question about whether your license is serving the public need. So the wise course of action is that if there's an emergency, just call in and let the police department know that you're going to be closed. And then catch up with the Selectman's Office on the next day the town hall's open. Uh, and and I don't think anybody's gonna crush you because of an emergency. Emergency is an emergency. But if you fall into a pattern where you're closing up hours that are irregular, that aren't approved by the Board of Selectmen, you really ought to come before the Board of Selectmen and ask for permission to close on those new hours. Because you're leaving yourself open to having your license modified or perhaps even revoked for failure to serve the public need. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We do know that we have at least two um license holders that do what I call summer hours and then go to winter hours. So I think we need to figure out how we address that. Um, and Mister Bowen has just told you what our responsibility is in terms of the issuing of the license. Um, and again, this is one of the things that we are we're trying to clarify the paperwork and make sure that the paperwork is clear to the public and to what the public is to able to expect from any one location. So, I don't know, gentlemen?
Uh, what's happening right now, of course, is uh the world, at least this country is hopefully going back to some kind of normalcy. Uh, we have a lot of restaurants that we all notice are closed Monday, Tuesday, or just Tuesday only. It's pretty pandemic everywhere right now that they're not running full schedules anymore. So until this really flushes out, we'll see how it is, I recommend we stay where we are because it's really not a uh major effort just to let us know they're gonna close, because you can have a Tuesday or Wednesday and at nine o'clock at night, uh, restaurant's dead. You know, you're losing money as an owner being there, so you decide to close. It's not a big deal, you just call the police department and say I'm closing early. You know, it's not a hassle.
Well, I I think I disagree with you, sir, because we have, and again, I've worked with the office staff here. We have a couple of businesses that are closing at nine o'clock in winter hours. Their license says either midnight or whatever. I don't believe that we, and their website is showing the later hours all year round. So I think that we are responsible for making sure that that information is correct. Mister Bowen, I'm gonna let you weigh in.
Oh, thank you.
I ask you to weigh in, please, sir.
Oh, sure. Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, you know, I don't think it's ever been the position of the board to uh, put businesses out of business. I I think over the years you've been pretty reasonable and uh, in terms of, you know, Wareham is a community that still has a significant seasonal element to it. And so I think everyone's aware that uh, call it the the high season, uh, is a lot busier than it is, you know, January and February and even March. So I I guess what I would do is I would try to impress on license holders that want to limit their, I'll call it off-season hours that they get in front of the Board of Selectmen with a request to do so. You you can grant permission for them to limit their hours uh, in recognition of, you know, uh, COVID or uh off-season versus high season. And and you've always done that, but it's really up to the license holders to say, hey, this is what I'm gonna do so that when you're driving by at eight or nine o'clock on a Tuesday night and you see a place has gone dark, you're not wondering, you know, what's happened there, so.
So if we were to do that, would that require a hearing? Or just simply a letter from uh an app, a holder, license holder to say, gee, during November, December, January, February, I'd like to close at nine, or you know, whatever, whatever their druthers would be.
Yeah, all right, so uh, you know, let's say I own Rich's Hot Rod Grill. And things aren't so hot in January and February. What I would do is I would just send a letter to Madam Chairman saying, I would like your permission to be closed for these hours, for these days, with the Board of, with the Select Board kindly consider my request. You throw that on an agenda, they can come if they want, you can invite them, uh, but there's no need for a hearing. It's just, it's more yeah, in a way you're modifying the license, but it's more of a temporary accommodation.
Okay. Are you, gentlemen, okay with that, Mister Slavin, Mister Chadwick?
Yes. I don't see why they just, you know, when you do the license, if they know they wanna be closed earlier, say three months in the winter, they just, we have uh two columns, you know, the right, you know, one and then the other one for, like it says, January to March. Then we have one from April to uh, whatever. We've done that before, actually.
Are you suggesting two columns on the license? Because that's not gonna work.
Well, there's a way we can, we can get it in there if if it's required. If someone wants to close like that and actually cut, uh, actually apply to us, I have a license, I think uh Captain Al's or Al's Tiki Bar actually asked us to do that.
Yeah, Captain Al used to be closed for a lot of time in the winter. He was down in Florida.
Right. But we never, we never have adjusted. But we never, we never have adjusted our paperwork. That's what I'm trying to make sure that we are doing correctly is.
Just get it. All all you really need is a piece of paper in the file that you've seen and approved. And, you know, they should just send you a letter saying, this is what I want to do. And as long as you vote to say, yeah, go ahead, you've got that piece of paper in the file.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any further discussion on that? Nope. Excellent. Um, any other business, forty-eight hour business? I have none.
None.
Okay, Mister Sullivan, your town administrators report. How are you this evening, sir?
I am well. Yourself?
Fine, thank you.
Yeah, we start off with a little bit of sad news. I just want to let you know that on uh, on December second, retired Wareham Police Sergeant Christopher Park passed. And I'd, so we just give him a moment of silence if we could. Thank you for your, your indulgence and uh, in our sympathies to, to his family and loved ones.
Thank you.
We uh, you'd already gone over, we'd received the notification from Patrick Brown from the governor's office that all the families staying at the Atlantic Motel will be transferred out of town to another location. I know they're trying to consolidate sites, especially trying to get services in the, in the sites, um, so I am you know, I, we've had a lot of people in town helping out, uh, Damian's Pantry and, excuse me, um, the Turning Point and a lot of volunteers and especially some of the people that are on our boards and committees and just want to thank them for all their help and kindness that they they provided for the uh, for those, um, those folks. It's been a tough situation for everybody, and I'm hoping this move will be a bad, positive ones for those involved. Uh, I received notification that the Wareham Free Library, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, uh, certified them once again in November, so I appreciate uh, Wareham Free Library Director, Patrick Marshall and his staff and all their hard work. And uh, we've also the trustees, the foundation and the friends and everybody that works to to keep that up and running and keeping it uh, certified.
And isn't it great that it's open again, the main library?
Um, and that's uh, that's one of the things we're gonna have to go over. I'd like to uh, as you know, the, we've been doing a few things, the uh, the library after the flood. Um, most of the flooring was uh, was uh, covered by insurance. We redid the rest of it. Uh, looks great, uh, you know, uh, and there was a lot of hard work done. Municipal maintenance ended up having a step in helping moving things, so you know, they 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 just keep on amazing with the staff that they have. So here's kind of the tough news, you know, we're, we've put three hundred thousand into the, working on some of the exterior as well. We're gonna be putting into, we've just redone the roof. We'll be redoing the flat portion of the roof as well. Hopefully soon, uh, that all came in, that roof all came in under budget. However, we had, we hired a company to do an engineering of the H V A C system. So two proposals, one for a repair and one for a replacement. And um, you know, going through it, we're looking at about one point seven million for a repair and about three point two million for a replacement.
How old is the current system?
Uh, I think it's about twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five years old. So um, it's it's a tough building for the way it was designed. It's um, you you know, certainly it was designed for more, I'd say attractiveness and function in a New England environment. Um, but it's uh, H V A C system's been tough for a long time now, and we've been pouring money into it. We just had to pour it, I believe, an extra twenty or thirty thousand to keep it up and running. So it's uh, it's a tough situation that we need to, to look into.
Yeah, well, the system is uh, does not protect uh, paper goods, books, et cetera. It's really a problem. We used to have things in storage there, historical things, and they weren't safe being there as well. And you know, with, as Derek says, the building looks nice from the outside. But as far as design for a library, you're supposed to have straight line sites, which it doesn't have, which creates a problem for the town as far as how many employees you really have to have there for safety reasons, for the children and also for the the adults that are there, so. It's just an ongoing thing. It's not gonna change easily.
So, um, and right now we've uh, we maxed out our debt service really within the, the budget for the Wareham Middle School roof. Um, so I know there's uh, this, this is going to be difficult, especially with the request we just had for for, for the increase, so um, you know, it's getting a little tougher. So it's something we're gonna have to look into how we can, how we can do it. We had anticipated honestly about seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is uh, you know, more, more manageable, obviously. But uh, we'll continue looking into it. I would hate, I'd honestly hate to put about one point seven million into that and not have a new, new system, have something that, you know, uh, as you, as you like to say, uh, Selectman Slaven or Select Board Member Slaven, uh, kicking the can down the road, so. Probably would be the easiest thing to do for, for us and just leave it to the next, next folks, but I don't think that's the right thing. So.
So. So to repeat, we are maxed out on our debt service budget. What is?
Yeah, so we, we're approximately a million dollars on the debt between um, between principal and interest, and that's the non-excluded debt, so that does not include the uh, Wareham Elementary School. The last payments that we're making right now are for the um, or for the, the roof, the, over at the, what was the dekis for that small portion? And now we're paying for the middle school roof, um, starting that. The second phase should be done. Um, that's about six point seven million. So, you know, that's, you know, we know that we won't have to make all the payments net, this year, but we'll have to do it next year on that roof, so it's a, it's a tough situation. We'll continue to look into some other alternatives for H V A C and look into it. I just needed you to be made aware in case anybody's asking you questions, why this isn't being done, because we had planned on it before, as you know. So the first thing you do is sort of hire, hire the engineering company to give you an idea of what you're looking at, and it was well beyond the scope of what we were thinking.
So on the middle school roof, how much of that, I thought some of it, some portion of the middle school roof, because there, what, six or seven different sections, as I recall? And some of it is going to be?
After, after any MSBA reimbursement or costs six point seven million.
Thank you. That was, yeah, okay.
Could come in a little bit lower on this, but, you know, we'll see.
Any other comments on that?
It's all money.
Hey, Mister Sullivan, do you have any other good news for us?
Yeah, um, do you, I'm trying to share the screen, but it looks like it's disabled right now. So I'll start talking about it if we get it enabled. I'll, we'll show the pictures, the um, there we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Noah.
See if I can. There we go. Can you see that?
Yes.
Yep. All right, so just give me some information. The uh, we're continuing on the rehab of the auditorium. As you know, we first thing was to fix the slate roof as the slate was sliding off into the, cutting into the rubber roof, which was then causing leaks into the auditorium. After the slate roof was repaired, you repaired the rubber roof. After the rubber roof, you repaired the ceiling in there, which they really did a tremendous job. Now we've got the, so far they've been uh, sanding and uh, polyurethane the floor and it's, it's come out excellent. So I really appreciate uh, you know, municipal maintenance doing this. They did hire a company, it was an individual, and I mean, my God, they did a great job. So you can see them, it wasn't just the auditorium floor, it was also the stage. And uh, it came out really, really well. And that's, so the next part is obviously we'll be doing, doing some more painting. Yes, they cover up the floor entirely once it's, it's painted. Um, we'll also be getting some new, new drapes and working on the echoing issue with this, and then the upper portion of the auditorium, making that usable space again, um. If you, I, I don't know if you've tried to sit in those seats up there, but they definitely, uh, it was definitely a different generation where they weren't my size, trying to, to sit in those. And I don't mean width, Mister Slaven. I'm, I'm talking about length of legs. Needs as well.
Whatever you say, dear.
I honestly think they're, they're schoolchildren seats.
They are.
I really, I really do. I mean, I've visited the building this morning with you, Mister S- Sullivan, and I, I think that, I think that kids seats.
Yeah, the, the leg length was, it's unbelievable. Boy, because I, I thought about, I, I, I think it was about last year, I was telling somebody, I said, ah, no, you're crazy. Look, this is perfect. Yep, nobody's getting by me if I'm at the end of this. Um, but also, so I really appreciate it. That's, it's starting to look really good. Um, it's one of those things, slow and steady progress. I actually love the brick in the back, the way they're washed, and like to see that sealed rather than painted over, because I think it's just, it's a great look to it.
Yeah, epoxy.
Yeah, um. So then I'd also like to thank uh, you know, uh, the Wareham Police Association and uh, more specifically Caleb Leroux, you can see um, in there with the, the police emblem on. The Police Association has been doing so much for the community, uh, you know, specifically this was the uh, the stuff a cruiser plus shop with a cop, which is a really great aspect. And here we have some of the donations from the town hall, uh, town hall staff, and I just want to thank everybody that was involved and uh, you know, seeing the, the members of uh, the town hall, employees, which are, which are many, you know, their residents as well, giving back. I always think that, that's amazing and appreciate all their, their help.
I donated Sandy, but you gave him back.
I said Squishmello's, not Sandy.
Yeah, right. Never mind.
Uh, um, well, I, I want to thank uh, Mister Foster, um, Miss Lazon and all their staff for the, and the assessing department. Uh, Ms. Nichols, her staff, uh, the tax rate was set and the, the bills are going out. And uh, that's probably one of the most anxious times of the year. As you know, if we don't get them out in time, you actually have to end up borrowing because the bills wouldn't be due till uh, May, which may excite some other, some people, but it's actually much more costly for the community overall. So thank them for their, their continued efforts and uh, you know, there's been some days, uh, not, not so recently, but some days in the past where uh, Mister Foster and his staff were on Christmas Eve, making sure this was all getting done, so. You know, I really thank everybody and their hard work. Uh, we had the, the windstorm from Mister uh, and Mister Buckminster, the D N R and uh, staff and some other volunteers came up, and this is second year ago, second year in a row where they came and wrapped the trees to make sure the ornaments and things didn't blow off and, on a weekend. So I want to thank them again for, for being a great part of the community and uh, you know, sent out some information about the uh, the remembrance trees and you know, every year it's uh, it's, it's getting that done for the last three. I, I just want to appreciate, let everybody know how much I appreciate their involvement. Um, Mister Menard, the municipal maintenance staff, the care they take towards it, and uh, actually forgot to mention, I don't know if everybody knows, but last year we wouldn't have had that extra section of the trees without Mister Warren, who allowed us to use electricity and his power and has been a great advocate for it, so. Uh, a lot to be, you know, it's not Thanksgiving, obviously, but it's, one of the great things about this community is the giving, and it's all year round, but especially now, you really realize how many good people we have, so I just want to thank them all.
Thank you. You also. Awesome. Uh, liaison initiative reports, Mister Slaven?
Okay, as I started to say, the, this time of year, everybody is pushing, you know, meetings on top of meetings, especially with the Zoom function being available. I had a meeting with the uh, M B T A Advisory Board that I'm on last week, just looking at different proposals of things potentially coming down the line. Um, yesterday we had the capital improvement program, which is where they talk about how much money they're gonna put aside for different projects over the next couple of years as well, so I'm trying to monitor that to see what we can do for Wareham as well. Um, the, as I mentioned before, we had the final information on the cannabis rulings. Unfortunately, the one piece that the state hasn't figured out yet is the cannabis cafes, which um, uh, communities which have cannabis can opt in, which is a real word that they're using that doesn't require anything special. The problem is, is they haven't sent any rules and regulations yet. So just so everybody understands, we did vote last year to put a one-year moratorium approved by the Attorney General's Office on this particular function until we know how, what, and where, so the planning board can sit down and set up how many, where they're supposed to be, et cetera. Uh, Route Six and Twenty-Eight, the project right now is really done until next April because of the lack of having uh, the asphalt available to pave the final, what we call finish coat, et cetera. Uh, the road itself is virtually done. Uh, just so people understand, it is only half the project. Uh, we've officially uh, questioned uh, Mass D O T about the second half of when they want to actually put that through as all approved a while ago, so I'm not sure what the status is. We're trying to get an answer and meet on that. Um, uh, Gatra, which is uh, our bus transportation is, for those who don't know, is actually putting a depot into Wareham, they're building a building right now for it, and that will also help us quite a bit as far as uh, having access for bussing and, you know, hopefully increasing our bus service throughout the area. So we'll be one of two regions that has the actual buses stored here and ba- and based out of here as well. And I think, you know, we, we did the, the meeting uh, last week on Thursday. Uh, I'm just a little disappointed uh, in the numbers and the amount of money and uh, I guess as a selectman, I can sit there and express my feelings. Uh, the ten percent increase is just not feasible. Um, if we were to even give them a
You're speaking about the school, sir, right?
Yes, correct. Even, even if we were to give them somehow a million dollars more, uh, the available money for the rest of the town departments would be like zero. And therefore we would not even be able to level fund and would have to cut services, and I just, I'm disappointed because a year ago, uh, there was a school committee meeting in which one of the school committee members chastised the school board and superintendent, et cetera, that you're spending money that you know a year from now you're not gonna have and you're gonna have a problem. Well, it's exactly what's come home to roost, and the problem is it's just uh, multiplied because of the lack of monies overall. Now we're, we, because it's, it's all part of the town. We all have to figure this out, and it's not gonna be pleasant at all. And I am very disappointed because it was discussed, and uh, the answer we got there last Thursday was, what do you want me to do? Well, I basically challenged him to figure it out, and that's it.
Thank you. Mister Chadwick, this is liaison initiatives?
Uh, nope, the only thing I have is, uh, have is, if anyone knows how to get water out of their ears, please let me know. I've been shaking my head for the last two hours now. That's it.
Rubbing alcohol.
I've tried almost everything and I still have water in my left ear. I feel like I'm underwater right now.
Okay, I have nothing to add um, to that, so I will go on to the consent, the uh, two sets of minutes, Mister Chadwick, may I have a motion?
Yes, I move for the approval of meeting minutes for the select board of eleven seven and eleven fourteen of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, they are approved. Is there any other business to come before us? Oh, I did have one thing.
Okay.
Mister Sullivan, we, I believe the town received a grant for I T upgrading. Am I correct on that?
It did. I just want Mister um, Mister Underhill to give us the uh, the back, the information on that.
Okay, then we'll put it, okay, thank you. Any other business to come for us? No, then No, then I will accept a motion.
Again, motion to adjourn, second.
Motion made a second to adjourn, it's not debatable, we will be meeting next week, the nineteenth, that will be the last meeting for this year. Um, and next week we will continue to be pounding away at our license renewals. Any further, they're not discussion, um, I will go for a roll call vote on the motion to adjourn, Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, we are adjourned, good night Wareham, and thank you very much, and thank you gentlemen for getting through a very busy agenda with. A record time, appreciate it.